I call the order of regular meeting on the President and Board of Trustees of Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, May 4th, 2015. Please stand for invocation led by Colonel Thomas Lewis of Salvation Army and Fledge of Allegiance led by trustee Eric Beck.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to be of service to our community. We pray here in Machesney Park that your guiding light will be upon those who will this night make decisions for the improvement of this city. We thank you because you love us. Now bless each, we pray, in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the village clerk will administer the oath of office of newly elected.
I, Steve Johnson.
I, Steve Johnson.
Having been elected to the Office of District Two Trustee.
I've been elected to the Office of District Two Trustee.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
And county of Winnebago.
And county of Winnebago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee.
And of the Office of Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I, Terry Bailey.
I, Terry Bailey.
Having been elected to the Office of District Five Trustee.
Having been elected to the Office of District Five Trustee.
And the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
And the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
The county of Winnebago.
And the county of Winnebago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The Office of Trustee.
And the Office of Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Can we put a rating? I, Eric Beck.
I, Eric Beck.
Having been elected to the Office of District Six Trustee.
Having been elected to the District Six Trustee.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
The county of Winnebago.
The county of Winnebago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The Office of Trustee.
And the Office of Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Mayor Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present. The attorney is present.
Thank you, Lori. We have a quorum. Next, we have approval of minutes from April 20th, 2015, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report. Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report reflects what the village received in Norfield Tax Funds of $21,657.06, Bill Machesney Road Funds of $232,569.20, and the total of all funds this evening is $10,036,188.19.
Thank you, Michelle. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? I hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications. Village clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several things this evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our newly elected officials, and the village looks forward to your dedicated service for our four years. We're excited for you. Also this evening, due to the intense study of his AP Calculus final, our student liaison is unable to be here this evening, and he has forwarded to me his report. So this will be under my report tonight, not the student liaison. First of all, this week's activities include Varsity Boys Track Meet at Home on the 5th at 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 6th at 5:00 p.m. is a Varsity Baseball Game at East, and Varsity Softball Game at Home, along with our Varsity Boys Tennis Match at Home. Thursday, Friday, the 8th is Varsity Boys Track Meet at Home, and Varsity Softball Plays Belvedere at Home at 5:00 on the 11th of the 13th sees Varsity Baseball playing Three-Port at Home. He had a lengthy report. I kind of slimmed it down a little bit. And Saturday, the 16th is Varsity Softball Tournament at Home. And this evening, Monday, the Triumph Music Honor Society Induction and Recital Ceremony is at 7:00 p.m. And Harlem Senior Awards Program is at 5:00 on the 5th. On the 7th is Spring Band Concert at 7:00 p.m. And everyone should make sure to come to Harlem's Veterans Documentary Project Gala on the 9th, and that's at Harlem High School from 3:00 to 5:00. On the 12th is Spring Sports Award. And in the evening at 7:00 p.m., the 13th is Choir Banquet and Voices of Harlem Show at 6:30. The 14th is a Spring Choir Concert at 7:00. And the 15th is the last day of school for the seniors. And Justin also notes that this week and next week are AP Exam Weeks. So cut the AP students some slack during the weeks. And also this evening, Your Honor, we're pleased to do a proclamation for Salvation Army Month, and trustee Snodgrass will read that, and the mayor will present it to Colonel Thomas Lewis.
Whereas the Salvation Army celebrates more than 128 years of service to our community, and although the Salvation Army is being recognized this week, their work continues 365 days a year around the world with one hand reaching to God and the other reaching to man, as seen through its community centers, family stores, adult rehabilitation centers, summer camps, after-school programs for children. Whereas the Salvation Army is especially appreciative of the hundreds of volunteers who help in providing meals, clothing, and ministry services for the needy and underprivileged; and whereas the Salvation Army is honored to be the recipient of funding through the generosity of community donors, businesses, foundations, and a member of the local United Way. And whereas a love of God and a desire to help others is the motivation behind the men and women of the Salvation Army. And they offer help to all people in need without regard for race, color, creed, sex, or age. Now therefore, Jerry Bowlin, Mayor of the village of Machesney Park, does hereby proclaim the week of May 11th, 2015, to be Salvation Army Week in Machesney Park, and he urges all citizens to recognize and appreciate the dedication and commitment the Salvation Army provides to our community's needs.
On behalf of the mayor, the trustees, and staff, and the entire village, we thank you and all the work that you guys do, and we really appreciate it, and we do very much.
May I only say we appreciate the opportunities we have to serve in such lovely communities as well, and the support that the volunteers and people give to us. And then I would also remind you of the postal food drive, which is this coming Saturday. Just leave it at your mailbox, and the postmaster or postman, I should say, will pick it up. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Also this evening, the mayor is presenting a proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week, which will be read by trustee Wilson.
Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exist in countries throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk proves the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality, impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and other annual meetings in their state, providence, county, or international professional organizations; and whereas it's important and appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Jerry D. Bowlin, Mayor of the village of Machesney Park, do proclaim May 4th through May 9th, 2015, to be Municipal Clerks Week.
Lori, on behalf of everybody in the village, we see from you what you do as a clerk, and I don't know how you do it without going insane, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, next, we have warrants. Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I present warrants in the amount of $497,643.27. They were reviewed and approved tonight at the Administration and Finance Committee, and I move further passage.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Are there any discussions? I see none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lori. The warrants have been approved. Next, we have administrative reports. At the last board meeting, I made an appointment for Tom Yoel to be appointed as treasurer. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Slow man.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you. Tonight, I will support Tom Yoel for the role of treasurer. I know him for many, many years, and I know he's a very capable person for handling the treasurer duties. I talked to him personally, and he said he'd done similar duties at the fire department in school, so I think he's a well-rounded person for this type of a job. And just to let whoever he does get appointed, my door will be always open to any questions about the treasurer's duties or any concerns. So if there's any questions, please always call. I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Are there any more discussions? I see none. Will the clerk take roll call?
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
The motion has been approved. Now, if Tom Yoel was stepped forward, he would be sworn in as our new treasurer.
I, Tom Yoel.
I, Tom Yoel.
Having been appointed to the Office of Treasurer.
Having been appointed to the Office of Treasurer.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
In the village of Machesney Park, Illinois.
And county of Winnebago.
And county of Winnebago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The Office of Treasurer.
The Office of Treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Beck.
Congratulations, Tom. Next, we have assignments of committee by the mayor, and I'll start with Administration and Finance. Eric Beck is chairman, Steve Johnson, vice chairman, Aaron Wilson, Frank Vitale, Ed Van Fleet, Michael Simons, and Michelle Johansson, an advisor, and myself as official. Next, we have, excuse me, Public Improvement and Safety. Robin Snodgrass, chairman, Terry Bailey, vice chairman, James Kidd, Jerry James, Renee Martin, Peter Vitale, and of course, myself. Then we have the Planning, Economic Development. Aaron Wilson, chairman, James Kidd, vice chairman, Robin Snodgrass, Ike Tricky, Pete Beck, Jeanne Bailey, and myself. The Liquor Commission, I am the commissioner. We have Aaron Wilson, Terry Bailey, Eric Beck, and Ike Tricky. Revolving Loan Fund Subcommittee, James Kidd, chairman, Todd Larson, Patrick Morrow, Alan Golden, and Michelle Johansson. Planning and Zoning Commission, Jim Hankins, chairman, John Valenti, vice chairman, Jay Alms, David Harmon, Greg Scalisi, Mike Meyer, and Shane Klinger. And Penny will get the emails out to you, each one of you trustees. Under village president Tom Strickland, the Machesney Park Village Board voted on ordinance 04-13. This ordinance imposed a municipal utility tax on electricity and gas within the village of Machesney Park, beginning with the first bill issued on or after March 1st, 2013, through December 31st, 2019. That ordinance stated that 55% of the proceeds from the taxes collected will be used to maintain the existing village roads and related infrastructure. Ordinance 04-13 was approved by four ayes to three nays. I, as a trustee in District One at that time, voted nay or no to the utility tax. I opposed the utility tax for two reasons. I felt the people did not have a sufficient explanation for the reason the tax was needed. I felt this tax should have been presented to the residents in the form of an advisory referendum before going to board for a vote. As the newly-elected village president, I took office May 6th, 2013. During my campaign for village president, I said I would address the utility tax and bring it back to the board. During my first eight months in office, the utility tax was addressed with information to residents in three ways. Through the village newsletter and the village website, through news media, the Post Journal printed several articles detailing improvements, accomplishments, using the utility monies. I asked residents to contact their trustee, divorce their input or concerns. I then believed residents were well-informed of all aspects the utility tax holds. As I had promised on February 18th, 2014, I brought utility tax back to the board to approve an advisory referendum to be placed on November 2014 ballot. Motion was made to approve. Motion did not receive a second to the motion, thus the motion failed. I believe the utility tax is a necessity to keep our village roads and infrastructure improvements moving at a pace to eventually overcome the prior years of insufficient maintenance of our roads. You can't overcome a deficit without a plan in which the deficit erases the plan. I believe utility tax meets that requirement. I also believe our residents should have a voice in any decision on our utility tax fate. With some new board members now in place, for the second time, I will address utility tax to the board. At the next board meeting, May 18th, 2015, I will bring to board a resolution directing Winnebago County Clerk to put an advisory referendum on the March 15th, 2016 ballot to keep or cancel utility tax in the village of Machesney Park, Illinois, with 100% proceeds collected from utility tax used to maintain the existing village roads and related infrastructure. Next, we have Attorney Green.
I will report, Your Honor.
Okay, you already got yours. Next, we have village engineer Chris Topkins.
I do have a report this evening, Your Honor. First off, just starting off, the weather report this week is not looking very conducive for construction, unfortunately. We had a concrete pour this morning that was canceled out on 173. We didn't get any work done today at Stone's Landing or on Leland as a result of last night's rains. And the entire week, it's not looking very good, especially for those of us who are pouring concrete on 173. We've got to have the weather conditions for that. So hopefully, the weather's going to cooperate a little bit better with us than it did last night. On 173, the contractor has poured the southbound lanes on Forest Hills Road. He's placing curb and gutter on 173 in the center medians now. They did get a couple pours in today to fill in gaps. A lot of the machine work was done between Burton Road and Forest Hills, and a couple of the noses, I think, were going to be poured today as well. The Mitchell Road box color is in. Rough grading on Mitchell Road is complete. They're set to pour the second southbound lane of Forest Hills Road now tomorrow morning, whether the weather accommodates us. And the contractor's been working a lot on finished grading up on the east end of the project. They're starting to hope to move some of the stockpiles out that are between Perryville and Mitchell Road, move that material up to the east end, and start building the lanes up there. On Colonial Ramona, all the sidewalk is in along Third Street minus the corner of Drexel and Third. We still got a curb ramp to pour there. Restoration is 98% complete. Weather permitting, we should have everything pretty much wrapped up this week. We'll have a few punch list items the contractor needs to take care of, but all in all, we're pretty much done. Talmadge, similar story, restoration's in. We'll have a little bit of punch list items to complete. There's also some paving that's going to happen on Talmadge. The utility companies came in and did some potting. They prepared for paving operations, which I think are scheduled for this week as well. On Stone's Landing, the contractor was coring for the parking lot and the ramp. A lot of the excavation got done last week. We did encounter some poor soils on site, which forced us to do some undercutting and bring in some braver on stone, help bridge those soils. The electrical conduit's in for the lights, and the contractor's planning on bringing in the copper dam next week so they can start getting the work done actually out in the river itself. Leland Trunk Storm Sewer and Persia Improvements, we had the resident meeting two weeks ago was very well-intended. The contractors began to install storm sewers, starting at Wilson. They're through the Gilbert intersection right now, just north of the Gilbert intersection. Again, weather permitting, will continue north this week, and they continue to plan on bringing the storm sewer here for the next couple of weeks. Gilbert, Wilshire, Liberty, and Marquette Improvements. We had the pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week. We've been processing some metals and shop drawings over the past couple of weeks. The resident meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night, 5:00 in this room. Contractors indicating that they want to start the week of the 11th. It'll probably be that Wednesday before they're putting a bucket in the ground, but things also need to proceed on Leland in order for them to get started on Gilbert as well. So we'll see what the weather does. Copper and Emerald Improvements, the bid opening is May 13th. We'll have a resolution to award that will go to both PISC and the board on the 18th. The Alpine Path, we submitted our preliminary design report and bridge reports approximately six to seven weeks ago. We got comments back, and the good news is our bridge metals came back clean. We have a number of items that we need to clean up on the preliminary design reports. We're trying to do so over the next week and a half here. We're trying to get our stuff turned around back to IDOT by the end of next week. Tying into the Alpine Road Service Drive, now that we have the preliminary design report comments, we'll incorporate any relevant comments into the plans. We're going to try to have that out to bid by the 15th as well. The Melbourne Improvements, the contractor has returned contracts. We have about 90% of the shop drawings and semitals for the signals that have been sent to IDOT for their review. We have a couple semitals that are yet to come in, mostly for the mast arms and poles. We should have those this week. We're scheduling a pre-con meeting next week. There is a requirement that IDOT put on us that we need to put light and message boards up two weeks prior to construction beginning. It's very possible those message boards will be up before the next time we meet in this room. Not quite sure as of yet I get to see a formal schedule from the contractor, but it's possible. And then finally, this evening, staff's been working a little bit on the resurfacing schedule for this year, the 2015 resurfacing. Hope to bring that into May's Public Improvement and Safety Committee meeting. We'll get that going this morning. That's all I have, Your Honor. The honor, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Public Safety Supervisor Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the timeframe of April 17th through April 30th, there were 771 calls for service in the village. 187 reports were taken, and 230 arrests. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Kidd.
Yes, Your Honor, I have two reports. The Public and Economic Development Committee has the resolution to the next conference, the next board meeting. Also, several people have called me about Tom Yoel's appointment, and they would hope that the village would consider the special election on the March 16th. Thank you, Your Honor.
Are there any more trustee reports? Trustee Bailey.
I'd just like to say thank you to residents of District Five for giving me the opportunity to represent them, and I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm also looking forward to serving the District Two as their trustee in the new capacity of the buildings for me. I'm also looking forward to working with staff too as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there... Trustee Wilson.
I just want to thank everyone who came out to Special Olympics on Saturday. It was a beautiful day weather-wise. It's been something I've done now for almost two decades, and there's been some years we've had some pretty bad weather. So beautiful day, blessing for all of our athletes. It was great to see Mayor Bowlin out there too, participating, and the smiles on the faces throughout the course of that Saturday priceless, and they'll remember that day forever. Also had a chance to work with the Ski Bronx at their Ski Bronx Bash. They continue to raise great amounts of money, and it's good that the village is assisting them too in the money commitment that we've pledged to them. But expect great things on the Rock River this summer, Wednesdays, Fridays, that free show at the Ski Bronx. If you can get a chance to get down and see them, it's well worth it. And also Salvation Army. Last one, of course, everybody knows the pictures that came out of Fairdale, the Rochelle area. Big kudos to the Salvation Army because there are some other organizations that drop the ball. And when I talk to people down there, and it's an ongoing process, they have high regard for what the Salvation Army did in that devastation.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Are there any more reports? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too would like to thank the citizens of District Six for their confidence of being as they would like to be as their trustee. And also would like to thank the nominee's staff and District Six citizens and friends for their well wishes as they have recovered from this related injury. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beck. Trustee Wilson.
Sorry to jump in again, but we almost lost our safety coordinator on Saturday. No, I'm kidding. He had to do the run and light the torch for Special Olympics. Good job, Serge. I'm not saying a word.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to welcome the new trustees and the new treasurer. I look forward to working with all of them. And then I wanted to let everyone know that the Administration of
the Administration and Finance Committee looked at Resolution 38R-15, and we're moving that forward with a positive recommendation to the May 18th board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Snodgrass. Are there any more reports? I see none. The next item for consideration is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the Consent Agenda to be considered separately? I see none. The Consent Agenda is accepted as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the Consent Agenda.
Tell me.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A is Ordinance 1115, an ordinance amending zoning code to further regulate abandoned and unused commercial signs. This is second reading. Item B is Ordinance 14-15, an ordinance rezoning numerous parcels identified in the ordinance from R3 to R1 in the Hawksview subdivision. Second reading. Item C is Ordinance 15-15, an ordinance rezoning several parcels of the Timberline Howl subdivision from R2 to R1. Second reading. Item D is Ordinance 21-15, a variance to the front carriage setback from 30 feet to 2 feet at 10912 Ventura Boulevard. Second reading. Item E is Ordinance 22-15, amendment to Chapter 14 of the code to further regulate inoperable and unlicensed trailers. This is the second reading. Item F is Resolution 36R-15, a resolution to authorize the village engineer to publicly bid to reconstruction of the Alpine Road Service Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Tell me, is there any further discussion from the trustees? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Thank you, Lori. All items under Consent Agenda is approved. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.